February 12th, 2019, comes the order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli.
Here.
Mrs. Colorelli.
Present.
Mr. Dunn.
Present.
Mr. Flannery.
Present.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mayor Dronowski.
Here.
Chief Remutis.
Here.
Chief Gosschalk.
Here.
Solicitor Stark.
Here.
Engineer Seera.
Here.
On the consent agenda, we're adding number 10, Committee to Clean and Beautify Ambridge for their chili cook-off for April 7th. So it'll be item number 10 on the agenda. No objections, and so order. We had an executive session pertaining to personnel issues, which consisted of the K-9 dog and the Mr. Mann, and some contract issue with the opioid situation. If we all stand and give a moment of silence, and then our Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, who is the source of all knowledge and truth, be present with us tonight and guide the members of this borough council. In the passions of debate, give them a quiet spirit; in the complexities of the issues, give them clear minds; and in the moments of decision, give them courageous hearts, that in all things they may seek your glory and the good of this borough. We also ask your blessing on the Tina Miller family, as the father-in-law is so critically ill. And we ask this in the name of him who made all things. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible).
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 Mrs. Miller said that she might make the night. She said she'd probably be a little late, so she shows what she does. By the way, she should be with her family. At this time, as everybody knows, there was some pamphlet being passed out over the weekend and last week pertaining to issues pertaining to Mr. Mann and this Borough Council. I'm turning the meeting over to our Solicitor, Mr. Rick Stark, and he will have comments on the issues.
Thank you. This is an open letter to the residents and employees of the Borough of Ambridge. And a copy of this open letter will be available to anyone who wants one after I'm done. It is addressed to all concerned residents and employees. I am writing this letter in my capacity as the Solicitor of the Borough of Ambridge, and with the knowledge and consent of at least a majority of Borough Council. If any Council person disagrees with the content of this letter, he or she may state their disagreement. The past year has been what can only be described as tumultuous times within the borough, and in particular, conflicts between borough officials and some members of the Ambridge Police Department. The purpose of the within letter is intended to respond to the publicized vote of no confidence that was recently reported in the print and news media. This letter is also intended to rebut the claims that the borough has lacked transparency that was delivered in a flyer to many homes in Ambridge last week. It is not my intention to create more conflict. Rather, it is my intention to publicly recite correct and accurate facts regarding these matters, so that Ambridge Borough citizens can assess the actions of Borough Council based on actual facts, not innuendo and false information. The Borough Council has reviewed the February 4th correspondence from the Ambridge Police Bargaining Unit and statement relevant to the bargaining unit membership's concerns. They too share those frustrations and concerns. However, the statements that were made to the media by the bargaining unit without ever addressing them first with Borough Council contained statements that were not factual, inaccurate, and false, potentially misguiding the Ambridge citizens. There were four claims made by the bargaining unit. The first claim, and I quote, "The first issue that is concerning the entire bargaining unit is the lack of response to the sexual harassment complaints made against James Mann." In March of 2018, complaints were made against James Mann. The borough asked for complaints to be submitted in writing. The complaints were again submitted this time in writing. No action was taken against Mann. At least one victim was forced to work the same time as Mann. There have not been any statements to the members of the department ensuring the members that sexual harassment would not be tolerated, or any assurance to the victims that the borough is attempting to rectify the situation." End quote. This is the response on behalf of Borough Council. First, let me be clear, that at no time was an employee forced to work with Chief James Mann, as the following timeline will show. On April the 4th, 2018, a member of the police bargaining unit was issued a notice of disciplinary action. The next day, April the 5th, the Borough Manager verbally received the first complaint of sexual harassment. A written complaint was submitted on April the 9th, and a second one was submitted on April the 10th. However, the day after the verbal complaint was registered with the Borough Manager, April the 6th, 2018, measures were immediately taken to remove Mann from the workplace. Mann did not return from April the 6th until April the 10th. On April the 10th, 2018, the Borough Council unanimously passed three motions. The first motion was a motion that this council impose the disciplinary action of a 30-day unpaid suspension upon the Ambridge Borough Police Officer that had been discussed in executive session. This 30-day suspension was imposed as a result of irregularities in the patrol log of the police officer who was assigned to the County Housing Authority. A second motion was passed. This was all at a public meeting. A motion that this council placed James Mann on paid administrative leave pending further investigation and future action by this council. The administrative leave imposed on James Mann was in response to the above-described sexual harassment complaints, an indication from investigating authorities that criminal charges would be filed against James Mann imminently. A third motion was passed, and that motion read, "The council appoint CSI Corporate Security and Investigations, Inc. to conduct an independent investigation of the Ambridge Borough Police Department. This action to appoint CSI to conduct an independent investigation of the Ambridge Borough Police Department was directed towards both the above-described underlying claims against James Mann and discovering of other patrol logs regarding the Housing Authority contained irregularities." The minutes of that April 10th, 2018, meeting recite that I publicly directed Borough Council and the mayor not to make any comments on personnel matters that must remain confidential. Following the April 10th, 2018, action by Borough Council, numerous requests were made to the Office of Beaver County District Attorney to promptly file whatever criminal charges it was contemplating against James Mann, so that his suspension could be converted from paid to unpaid, and the CSI investigation could continue. Criminal charges were eventually filed against James Mann on August 23rd, 2018, and the Borough Council immediately convened a special meeting, which requires advertisement, on August 30th, 2018, at which time his suspension was changed to without pay or benefits pending final disposition of these criminal charges. Those charges are still awaiting final disposition. The Police Department needed direction, and with the entire Police Department under investigation, the decision to go outside the department was made. Based on the excellent service record of Chief Remutis in his prior service as Chief of Police, Borough Council appointed Mark Remutis as interim Chief of Police. Both the employees who filed sexual harassment complaints with the borough also filed EEOC complaints. These complaints were immediately forwarded to outside legal counsel per the borough's insurance policy requirements. The outside legal counsel has advised me within the past two days that those claims have not moved forward in the office of the EEOC or through private counsel for the claims. Due to the fact that these complaints are in litigation, Borough Council members cannot comment or answer any questions regarding those allegations. That was the first issue raised in the bargaining units. Their second claim provided as follows, and I quote, "CSI completed the investigation in July 2018. The investigators took statements from employees of multiple agencies as well as borough employees. The bargaining unit has been told that CSI authored a report and submitted it to the borough. It has been reported to the unit off the record that the report is some 80 pages in length and recommends Mann's termination." End quote. This is the borough's response. "The independent investigation that is being conducted by CSI was not completed in July 2018, and has been placed on hold at the request of the Beaver County District Attorney's Office. Interviews of 11 individuals, only eight of the 22-member Police Department have been interviewed to date, were conducted in May and June 2018. The document that was received by me, the borough's legal counsel, was a partial report, which is a summary of those 11 interviews, and is far less than 80 pages. This remains an incomplete report. There have been no recommendations given or implied by CSI. I personally spoke with the CSI investigator on February 7th this past week about those alleged off-the-record statements attributed to him, and he assured me that, one, he did not indicate that this partial report was a final report; two, that he never stated, as has been reported, that the report was 80 pages long; and, three, that this partial report made no recommendation whatsoever, including that Mann be terminated. Once CSI investigators are allowed to continue their investigation, as authorized on April 10th, 2018, by this body unanimously, the remaining investigation of the Police Department will be completed, and then a report will be delivered to the council for its next steps in a plan of action. This matter is a matter of personnel and ongoing investigation, in accordance with all existing laws, confidentiality and nondisclosure will be strictly followed. The cost of that investigation to date is $9,343.45, which amount was approved at a public meeting held here." The third claim of the bargaining unit provided, and I quote, "The third issue in this letter was the lack of communication between council and the police. Officer John Chicos, a bargaining unit representative, was told by councilmember Bob Dunn and Tina Miller that they were advised by the borough Solicitor not to communicate with the officers." End quote. This is the Borough of Ambridge's council's response. "The lack of communication is being misconstrued and misinterpreted by the borough police officers. The claim that the members of council were advised by me to not communicate with the officers is correct in all matters of personnel and criminal and civil litigation. That has always been my standing advice to all of my municipal bodies. Just as our officers cannot divulge information and discuss their ongoing investigation, that holds true to the members of Borough Council and appointed staff. The claim that, quote, 'The bargaining unit has been unable to communicate with members of council about the state of affairs in the Police Department, including basic operational matters,' end quote, is incorrect. In the early part of the fourth quarter of last year, through the newly hired interim Chief of Police, a survey seeking input from all officers and officials was solicited to seek the input from all those invested in what their concerns were: how crime was perceived, what equipment and policy needs are, where they would like to focus the Police Department to be, etc. From that survey, only 50 percent of the officers participated in this process that was intended to work collectively with the borough governance in improving police operations. 100 percent of the elected officials responded and participated in this survey. In addition, in December, the Council Public Safety Committee delivered a letter that highlights many ongoing affairs and updates noteworthy to the Police Department's employees. Furthermore, on January 10th of this year, four days before the unit's statement was released and published in media outlets, the Ambridge Council Public Safety Committee, Mayor, Chief Remutis, and Borough Manager had a meeting with Representative John Chicos and discussed various police operational matters, including the retirement of the K-9, community-oriented policing efforts, and the re-establishment of the Housing Authority patrol details." The fourth and last claim made by the bargaining unit was, and I quote, "The fourth issue in the letter was the elimination of Beaver County Housing Patrol. It was discussed by the mayor during a crime watch meeting that council voted in executive session to eliminate the housing control. When asked about the housing elimination, it was stated they were saving on the pension costs. The cost is less than $2,500 for the year for 1,000 patrol hours." End quote. This is the borough's response. "Borough Council did not take any vote on this matter, either in executive or open session of council. In fact, in order to mitigate the risk of contractual violations with the Housing Authority, the Borough Council did not take action, one way or the other, to renew the contract. It simply allowed it to expire. The safety of those living in the county housing properties is entrusted just as those of the other thousands of citizens who live elsewhere within the community to the officers assigned to patrol duty each day. The Ambridge Police Department, at a minimum, is staffed with three officers on duty per shift, and during some shifts, having five officers on duty, including the chief, and special assignments. As the unit is aware, there are multiple criminal and civil charges pending. There will be no communication relative to those matters between borough representatives, elected or appointed, until those matters are resolved. The Borough Council has employed interim Chief of Police. The chief is entrusted in bringing stability to the operations of the Police Department, and we all believe he has. The borough encourages the bargaining unit membership to reach out to Chief Remutis, share your concerns, so that an appropriate course of action can be accomplished in a fair and unbiased conventional manner that is in the best interest of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the Ambridge citizens." Many rumors have passed around the community that have unfairly done damage to the character and reputation of the Borough Council and the manager. These public servants have performed their duties without being given the opportunity to explain their actions and intentions due to laws that forbid public comment without jeopardizing the borough. It is sincerely hoped that this letter to the community will help set the record straight. Every Ambridge citizen, police officer, employee, and official is a valued part of the community. There are procedures, processes, and rights that need to be protected and embraced. Due process takes time, and we too are frustrated. All claims and matters and complaints have been investigated, are being investigated, have been addressed, will be addressed, and responded to. We thank you for your cooperation and ask you for your patience. And I sign that in my capacity as the borough Solicitor. I understand from the crowd here and the cameras here that this is a matter of great public interest. So far, one side of the story was told. Tonight, a second side of the story was told. There's only one set of facts. You've heard them tonight. We're not accepting question-and-answer sessions with questions on what I've said. I've already told you that this involves matters of personnel and litigation. That concludes my statement.
Thank you. We'll have citizens question. Each citizen has a right for five minutes.
We are starting to have citizen comment, correct?
This is it right now?
Yes. My name is Joanie Gill. I live at 90911th Street here in Ambridge. In August, I stood before this council and advised you should seek outside counsel regarding matters of James Mann, and based on the potential conflicts of interest with Solicitor Stark. I reiterate that today, particularly in light of the response that was just read. The community members present need to understand that having a law degree doesn't guarantee that you do the right thing, nor does it mandate it, unfortunately. What I would hope is that this council will again take my suggestion to seek outside counsel, given the potential conflict of interest that exists between Solicitor Stark and James Mann. I do have some specific questions for council tonight. The first question. In August of 2017, when James Mann came to my house and would not leave, he advised me that the Police Department had just undergone extensive racial and cultural sensitivity training that was mandated based on racial claims that had been filed against him and a couple other officers. He mentioned in particular Douglas Edgell. I would like to know how much those claims were settled for?
Ma'am, I've already stated, there is not going to be any answers. This is citizen comment period. You may say your...
I'm not asking about current claims. I'm asking about previous claims. So you're saying you won't answer that?
I will not.
Is that what you're gonna say? Okay. So, my next question. How much did the Solicitor bill with regards to those claims per his services rendered? I'm not asking for settlement things. I'm asking for money is paid by the borough to the Solicitor regarding these claims that mandated cultural diversity and racial sensitivity training.
I don't know that offhand. We would have to find that out.
That would be fantastic. If you could put that up, that'd be awesome. My next question. What company conducted this mandated training that resulted because of those claims?
Again, I'm not sure about that one. I have to find out for you.
But you will provide the name of the company?
Sure.
Great. Can you also provide how much money the borough paid to that company to provide those mandated trainings? Both in time spent for the officers, potential overtime, and the actual bills submitted by the company? Fantastic. My last question, actually, I have another one follow-up to that. Given the current situation here in the borough, will there be additional mandated training that will be happening, and will the same company be doing that training, since it appears it did not work?
When the investigation is completed, though, we will go over the investigation report and make determinations from that point.
Great. And how much money was paid out to analyze, or were there bids that were solicited to find companies that would conduct those trainings? And will that information also be made available to the public? And will there be more bids solicited for future and ongoing training?
Yeah, I don't know. I can't answer that. I don't have those information available right now.
Okay. How can we follow up to get that information?
We'll follow up, and we'll get the information if you want to stop down back to the borough office in a couple days.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Lori Ann Burgess, 570 Merchant Street. Counsel, Solicitor Stark, your attitude towards the community and our Police Department concerning this issue is the meaning. Your claims of transparency are pathetic. These police are the borough of Ambridge's blue line of safety, and they deserve our respect. You are treating them all as offenders instead of working with them to restore their faith in their employers. The women that came forward, thank you. You are amazing, brave women and role models to all. Me too, Ambridge Police Officers. We will not let this go. Ambridge is better than this. We need to fire Jimmy Mann for what he did to them, and a lot of other people in this borough.
(Applause).
Anybody else?
No. Who's next?
Here, nobody else. We'll continue with the order of business.
No, there are lots more.
(Inaudible).
I've been a citizen in this town all my life.
Did you mention your name and where you live, please?
My name's Karen Molinera. I lived in this town all my life.
Your address, please.
I live in Baden, Philip Street. And I'm here, something's been on my mind for oh, good four years of what Jimmy Mann said to me, and I'm finally opening up to say something about my daughters, okay? My daughter got tied up in the opioid epidemic, which I'm sure every child and every family has a problem. Now, when they arrested her, I was worried about her. I went down there, and I said to Jimmy, "Can you help me give me the charges on my daughter?" And he yells, he says, "You know, you know where your daughter's going? She's going to Muncie. That's where she's going. Do you know what Muncie is, Mrs. Vala?" And I said, "No." And he said, "It's a state prison. That's where she's going." And then he calmed down a little bit, and he says, "Well," he says, "you have another daughter, right?" And I said, "Yeah." He says, "Why don't you bring her down here to sit on my lap, so we can talk about the charges we'll drop on Carrie?" That's exactly what he said to me. I left there in such a state of mind, being upset already about my daughter and her addiction, and tied up getting arrested. I was upset as it was, but when I left that office, I was in tears and shocked at the treatment I got for the help of my daughter. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you.
(Applause).
No other business. We're gonna conduct the pre-welt of previous...
There's one more!
Sorry, guys. I'm sorry. It's gonna be real quick. My name's Richard Gravasi. This isn't really in regards to the police matter. I don't actually have a lot of knowledge on this police matter.
Can you give us your address, please?
I live Dust Avenue, 1800. This is in regards to the Falcon Pipeline that's gonna be going through the Ambridge Reservoir. Some, I would hope that most of you know about what's gonna be going on with this. And my concern is, does everybody else here know about it? How many people know about the pipeline that's gonna be going through a reservoir? Just like quick show hands, there's probably like 30, maybe 50 percent. There's a larger percentage of people who don't know about the pipeline that's going on, and I just wanted to bring that into light. There's about eight days left for the public to write into our state legislatures for the Department of Environmental Protection to just make some note of the fact that they could potentially poison our entire water supply. So I wanted to just bring this more into public light, because I personally didn't hear anything about it until about a month ago, and it's about two years old at this point. So I was hoping that we could try and work with our school district in some way, maybe have like an English assignment, something of that matter, just to get the kids' voices out there, to get just more knowledge of the fact that, sure, this great thing's coming into Potterstown, should bring 600 odds and drops. That's amazing. could potentially poison our entire water supply. So I wanted to just bring this more into public light because I personally didn't hear anything about it until about a month ago. And it's about two years old at this point. So I was hoping that we could try and work with our school district in some way and maybe have like an English assignment, something of that matter, just to get the kids' voices out there, to get just more knowledge of the fact that, sure, this great thing's coming into Potterstown, should bring 600 jobs in drops. That's amazing. But are those 600 jobs worth everybody's health? Sure, half the people here are almost twice my age. You might not be around to deal with ramifications of that. But the grand, your grandkids and great grandkids will have to deal with that ramification if something's not done. And I just wanted to put it out there that we need to have more public awareness of this possible epidemic that could happen in the region.
You know, there was three different meetings conducted by the DEP. And that was done over a course, I think of three or four months.
Yeah, I just became aware of this.
And that this council was well aware and we worked diligently with our water authority to make sure that they were on top of it because that's their business there, but it's ours too. It's our drinking water. It's 40,000 people's drinking water. You can't live without water. We are very, very, very concerned about that pipeline going into our reservoir area. We don't want it to go there, but the DEP granted them permission to put that line in there. And we saw what happened in center township months ago when the explosion over there of a gas line. That could happen up there at our reservoir.
Yeah.
And then if that does happen to the reservoir and our water system is contaminated, our lake is contaminated, 40,000 people are not going to be having water.
Correct.
And the DEP stopped us and they told us that they had, we must cap our wells that we had in the river for a backup system, but I'm assured by the water authority that they have a plan for a backup in case anything does happen to the reservoir, we will be supplying water. I recommend that you go to the water authority meeting, which will be next week.
Okay.
And voice your concerns there and they can address what they've done, more, more clarify what they've done. And I think you'd be pretty well satisfied.
All right.
Well, thank you for your concern too, because I think what people are forgetting is we've got a major problem here.
Yeah.
We've got a major problem with our water system here.
Correct.
And a lot of people aren't recognizing that.
And that's why.
And I'm glad there's a lot of people here to, to hear that, to understand it, that this council has been on top of that from day one, been working diligently with the Ambridge Water Authority and different outside agencies to make sure that if anything does happen to that reservoir, we have a backup system that will supply 40,000 people. The other thing too is that we sent a letter of disagreement with the DEP. We don't like them permitting, putting a line on, I don't care how deep they go.
They only add an extra 30 feet if I remember correctly.
And, and that relatively is nothing. If water, if that line breaks and that contamination seeps through the soil and gets into our water supply, that's what concerns me. It might never happen, but there's a possibility of it happening. They said that gas line in center township would never blow up either, but look what happened.
Correct.
So thank you for coming out there and putting your support behind that because, believe me, we've been on it.
Thanks, Freddie.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Campbell. I live at 273 Ballston Street. This is, I don't know, 14th. You want to put a playground in down by the boulevard. Got all this land over here. Why don't you put it over here? You got rid of the ball fields and everything over here to fill this school and.
What do you mean over here?
Throw all this land right here.
We required the land, we required the land.
Why would you put it right?
I had it in Merchant Street and it took four years. We wouldn't have another playground in this town if I gave up four years ago when I was told no, every year and Joe Cowherd can vouch for it. I never gave up because I think that, I had a playground growing up and I grew up in that district.
I had a playground till the fourth ward.
Exactly. So you take what you can get. We have a nice piece of property to put in the playground.
You got a piece of property down by the boulevard where somebody can come snatch your kids and go. You have one down here.
When we planned for this, this property, it will be fenced in, there will be, safety concerns will all be addressed.
You got one down, you got one right down here on the boulevard nobody goes to. You got Polo Park, nobody goes to.
So we shouldn't build any recreation either?
You need a place for the kids to ride bikes instead of on the street. I watch the kids.
Exactly. And that's exactly why I did everything I could to acquire more.
Let the citizen talk.
I watched the kids play right on the street, on Ballston Street. Ballston Street is like a circus. The cars slide down the street, go down to 11th Street, and I'm lucky I see a police car sitting down the end of the street to stop these people. They're all trying to get to the bridge and there's little kids I watched last year, that big, out in the street. And they milk and said, we'll get out of the way. They're going to get killed. But you want them, you want them to walk all the way down to the boulevards to go play. You want them to walk to 8th Street to go play. There's nothing around here.
Where the, where the playground was, where the visitor center is, it's one block away where we're building the playground.
Where?
I want to heading in Merchant Street.
All I know is they said down there where.
Do you understand, do you know where, where the, do you know where Century is?
I know where Dr. Norke's.
Exactly. That land right across from there is where we're building the playground.
Why? You know, this land right over here.
Doesn't belong to us.
It doesn't belong to us. That belongs to the school.
It belongs to other people.
Right. They're building a nice little park over there so they can ride their bikes instead of going on the street.
That's why we're building a park so they don't. I've been witness. I live down there. I know what they don't have.
Mr. Campbell, your five minutes are up, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name's Jolene Maslanic, 609 Merchant Street in Ambridge. This letter was an insult. The public demands Mann to be terminated. This has been years of abuse. You, Mr. Stark, are in cahoots with Mann. Do the right thing, counsel.
My name's Steve Athiounis. I am a tenant resident, 533 Dust Avenue. I am currently on your Crime Watch team. I'm a little over 60 years old. I've got a background. When I came back to Ambridge, I have to leave as a little boy of eight, I acquired apartment up in the economy cresty village. I won't go into a lot of details about that except for the current, if he's still there as a resident manager, I'll only say first name, Randy. If he's in here, I hope he is, he's not. This man does not want Crime Watch up there. All the tenants were threatened and told that if we didn't tell him, so that he can call the police officers if an incident was happening. I explained, what happens if two people are getting beat up, raped, killed, whatever, guns, hell, you know, it can escalate. You called me, I said, what happens when you're here? What happens when you go home? This is the kind of, of ridiculous obstacles that our police force has to deal with. How can you tell a resident they can't call the police in case of an emergency or if you're witnessing an act? That's a crime. I believe the law, say that you do it over.
He was indicating you can't call the police. Somebody indicated that.
Randy told us ourselves and I can bring about 20 witnesses next council.
He's not a borough employee. Why would you listen to him for? He's not a borough employee.
Well, why do you think I'm living in the house now? Because he had me, tried to lock me out of the house before.
So you're talking, you're talking to the wrong party as far as that gentleman is concerned.
All right, let me, let me cut to that. The point is, we were told we can't call our law enforcement.
That's ridiculous.
I can get time stamps.
We have, we have great police officers in this community that will respond, that will respond and take care of our citizens.
I won't go into any more details of that. I doubt that's not the time. But I did want to say I appreciate and hold our police officers in a high standing.
Settle in.
They deserve every, every respected, respected, responsible comments, maybe a hand, round of applause for even being in Ambridge Police Department.
Absolutely. They put their lives on the line every day.
Short handed, well, Crime Watch, we try our best to do what we can. I'd have another suggestion, but that would be for them. We do our best to report what we can. There's not enough of them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
So I'm also a member of Crime Watch and I know that you said you weren't commenting on the housing contract and I know that you said you didn't resign, it just expired. I just want to say that I think it's really important that we have our extra patrolmen up there because there are deals happening, there are things happening that aren't going to be caught until it's down in the rest of the town. They know, they see that there's, I mean, these residents up there can see that there are less patrol up there and that things are going to start happening. They're going to start dealing, it's going to take over the rest of the town and then you're going to have a lot bigger problems. So I think it's important that, you probably need to resign that.
You know, that's a county facility, right?
Yes, I get that.
And you know, the county has a sheriff's department, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the sheriff's department is not located in Ambridge.
It doesn't have to be. They could have their own patrolman up there.
But they don't.
Yeah? Why not? They don't.
There's not a free source.
They could have a sign on it somewhere. Thank you.
I'm Joellen Rudolph. I live at 10, I'm a tenant at 1026 Melrose Avenue. I really was not intending to speak at this meeting. I attended, because I have a daughter who lives on Beaver Avenue and she was concerned about working at the time. But I would just like to say, and I hope you take this as constructive criticism, in leadership, the reason we have two ears and one mouth is because we should be listening twice as much as we talk. And I have just witnessed citizens being, leaving this microphone feeling discounted and like they weren't heard because as soon as they would say something, someone would give a rebuttal. If you are, are that quick to give a rebuttal, that means you're thinking about that, you're not listening to what the person is saying. And I find that very disturbing in a community that is so small and close knit. When I first came here a year and a half ago, I'm from Beaver County, but I've lived in seven other states. And when I first came here from, back here from California, this is, I got the feeling that this was a close knit community. And that has, that bubble has been bursted today because I don't feel that you're listening to your citizens. And so, if anything, when you're doing this diversity training, and I do have some suggestions, but I know I would run out of time if I get there, that, that needs to be a part of diversity training. Diversity training is not all about race. It's about valuing everybody in every any sports.
Ma'am, if you have your comments, you can come down to the borough manager's office to run the regular business hours and we'd be more than happy to take your concern, if you'd like to do that.
Well, we'd be the results of that.
Okay. Seeing no more residents, we'll go into the regular order of business approval of previous minutes from January 8th, 2019. Called a rally second by Mr. McCoy. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Colerelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Approval and ratified pay of bills and expenses as listed.
So moved.
Mr. Flannery?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunn. Any questions on any of the bills? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Colerelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mrs. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to adopt resolution number 1-2019, a resolution of the Borough of Ambridge, County of Beaver Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Decommissioning the K9 dog named and known as Hector and vesting title to Hector to Officer John Chicos.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cafarelli, second by Mr. McCoy. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Colerelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize the purchase of 2019 Ford Interceptor police unit at State Coast Stars contract pricing with supplemental emergency upfitting equipment and in-car camera. A total of price of $39,839, $8 payable via four-year purchase lease agreement with the first two years of payment payable from the drug forger fund per the written authorization of District Attorney Dave Loser dated October 18, 2018.
So moved.
I'll second Mr. Flannery's motion.
Mr. Flannery, second by Mr. Cafarelli. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Colerelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mrs. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize the purchase of a 2013 Ford Explorer Interceptor from the Borough of Baden at the price of $8,500 to be used at the fire department for code enforcement and inspection duties.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Miller, second by Mr. McCoy. Any questions on the motion?
Yes, I'm nosy. How many miles long?
I think it was under about 50,000.
And this, Chief Cartrow, this will help you out in your code enforcement program, is that correct?
Yes. Currently inspectors are using the Ford F-150 pickup to do inspections and it's starting to get our commerce and trying to get around to do inspections. So with this right here, plus if this vehicle's out of service, if the pickup is out of service for inspection or something, they're using an unmarked car and if they get a call, come back to the station, they, it's the late response in getting back, so.
Okay. So this will help out quite a bit?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Colerelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to grant a certificate of appropriateness to grant a certificate of occupancy for a daycare facility and minor interior improvements of 1231 Merchant Street for the recommendation of the Historical Architectural Review Board.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Flannery, second by Mr. Dunn. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Colerelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to grant a certificate of appropriateness to grant a certificate of occupancy for a daycare facility and minor interior improvements of 1231 Merchant Street for the recommendation of the Historical Architectural Review Board.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Flannery, second by Mr. Dunn. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Colerelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize the replacement of a borough building rooftop HVAC system and a work contract to do mechanical and state Co-Stars pricing at $39,950 with the Ambridge Water Authority and Ambridge Municipal Authority each contributing $7,860 to the project. Mr. McCoy, second by Mrs. Calderelli. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please. Mr. McCoy, second by Mrs. Calderelli. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize payment in amount of $59,723 to Bayoni Construction for invoice number five for the Merton Street, Streetscape Project. With, Mr. Cowherd, could you elaborate a little bit on this?
The Streetscape Project is a roughly a little under $3 billion project. Once the first million and a half is paid by the Beaver County Community Development Office, the invoices are sent down here for payment. The project's about 60% complete, so we're going to start seeing invoices that'll be paid on bond.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. McCoy, second by Mrs. Calderelli. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize acceptance of change order number three for the Merton Street Streetscape Project in amount of $7,200 for additional work in Phase Three area including additional storm source and demolition work.
Some move.
Mr. Flannery?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Miller. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize Crease Brothers Builders to secure and improve the south wall with the diverged street, streetscape area at a cost not to exceed $20,500. Mr. Cowherd, can you explain a little bit on that?
The new parklet that's being constructed in the middle of Merton Street as part of the Streetscape Project, there was three buildings that were there before, you know, you have the empty lot now. When the last building was demolished next to Anderson's Candy, the wall of that building remained. That wall does not belong to Anderson's Candy, it actually belongs to the borough, it's on the borough lot. In order for the Streetscape construction to continue, that wall's in jeopardy of falling over. There's a conduit run that needs to be placed there as soon as construction resumes in March. The construction can't continue till that wall's stabilized. We've got many complaints of loose bricks, it's very hazardous, you can see. The onsite inspector solicited proposals from multiple brick, masonry folks to do work there. A lot of people didn't want, had any interest in doing the work and one bid was over $30,000. There's a summary of all the contractors we've reached out to. The bid here, proposal that's before you is below state bid requirements. They do, this company does do effort work. This same company did the work next to Vochelli's. If you remember, we toured down that building there a number of years ago, it was the same scenario. The wall of the building that was raised wasn't Vochelli's, however, it remained to keep Vochelli's safe. However, it didn't belong to Vochelli's, but when Vochelli's bought that lot, he had to do something with the unsafe wall. This contractor is the one that did that work there. It turned out to be a very nice addition to that empty lot. So the goal was at the end of this project, it would look the same. This contract is split two ways. It's $20,500 just to make the wall secure, fill all the holes, re-point the top off and cap it. It'll be another contract next month for probably about $7,000 if you're interested in parging it and painting it. But right now, we're at a predicament where we do have to make it safe for the construction to continue. And basically, you're making it a park, you don't want a dangerous wall there.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Some move.
Mr. Flannery?
Second.
Mr. McCoy, any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize the replacement of a borough building rooftop HVAC system and a work contract to do mechanical and state Co-Stars pricing at $39,950 with the Ambridge Water Authority and Ambridge Municipal Authority each contributing $7,860 to the project. Mr. McCoy, second by Mrs. Calderelli. Any question on the motion?
Yeah, how we look at it budget-wise?
Very well, if you look in your packets, it's a big bill and it's long overdue, you have the original HVAC system on this building. It's no secret, it's nickel and diming us extensively, they break down all summer, they've met their end of life, they're 25 years old now. This price here is actually considerably less than the two other proposals that we received, this is at state Co-Stars prices. The borough ran a surplus last year to pay for this work and the overrun on the Streetscape is coming out of the surplus. I have a breakdown of the bond fund and the surplus that shows how this is all paid for, it won't have a negative effect on the operations of the sinking fund come the end of the year. So we're sitting very favorably. When we talked about doing this project in budget time, we had no idea how municipal is going to end fiscally at the end of the year. We turned out to be better than what we thought. So instead of doing the project piecemeal and doing two units a year, or let's just do half this year and a half next year, we're doing the whole project this spring. The water and the municipal authority stepped up and we're going to take care of two of the units and we will do the other three.
Sure, that's a good move because, you know, when you get contracting at one time, they're all here, equipment's here, instead of, you know, coming back like you said here later, it'd be a little bit more, or a few months later. I'm glad you have a reputable company, two of these really reputable here, here in the Pittsburgh region, Beaver County, Ylang-Enany County. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize the execution of a lease and maintenance agreement with Tosh Shiba Business Solutions in the amount of $277.3 per month for 63 months for the purchase of a new copying machine. Do I have a motion for that?
Second.
Mr. McCoy? Mrs. Calderelli? Do, Joe, could you explain the reasoning for this copying machine?
The copying machine in the borough office is approximately seven years old. It breaks down repeatedly. The current maintenance contract for that machine is expired and was not renewed, basically, they won't even renew it because the parts don't exist anymore and it's finding it difficult. It was discussed in budget time last year of replacing the part of the copying machine. It's roughly about $3,000 a year. The former machine that you bought seven years ago had an annual, a monthly lease payment in excess of $300 some dollars a month. Now, this isn't just simply the lease on a copying machine, it's roughly half. Half is the lease, which is you're buying it, and then the other half is the maintenance agreement, all materials, supplies.
So that, this is a lot less than we had presently?
It's actually cheaper than what you bought seven years ago.
Right time, that was my question, okay.
And then we received two proposals for this. One proposal was from the company that you currently have and then this proposal through Toshiba is the same company that did the machine at the library, the Chamber of Commerce, and I believe the school district. So they have a business relationship within the town.
Any other comments?
Oh yeah, one more question on that.
Go ahead.
Did you just, their warranty is, as far as their warranty?
This warranty runs the length of the lease, for 63 months.
Good. That's it. I'll write it down. Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize and establish the 2019 street sweeping scheduled to operate starting April 1st, 2019 and concluding October 4th, 2019, running every other week. Consider additional parking restrictions October 21st through December 6th for lease pickup requested by the Public Works Department.
Some move.
Second.
Mrs. Calderelli, second by Mr. Cafarelli. Any question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize the solicitor to prepare an ordinance that would amend the borough zoning relate, regulations to provide regulations that would govern the construction and replacement of small cell facilities within the borough. Mr. Cowherd, could you explain that one, please?
This is a rather new technology with cell phones, you're seeing a lot advertising 5G. The 5G cell network doesn't operate on those large cell towers that you traditionally see within areas. They operate on small repeater-like towers that are basically erupted and erected within the municipal wide of ways. There's three actually proposed to be constructed in the borough within the next coming month. One on Beaver Road at the corner of 21st Street and two on Thus Avenue across from the high school. The borough doesn't have any governance or regulations regarding small cells because it's new technology. You had ordinances that regulated cell towers, but this totally differs from a cell tower. What we're trying to do is put regulations in place so that, besides the three that are already coming that you can't prevent, you can put regulations in place so that the future ones are regulated. There's concerns that, you know, you have a National Registered Historic District, you'd hate to see someone plopping a small cell in front of Old Economy Village. That was my mindset of it. The solicitor waited out, there was a state legislative effort to take the municipal zoning powers of small cells away from the towns just about a month ago, that was defeated, so the power to regulate it by zoning was basically retained. So right now, we're at the position where we would authorize preparing an ordinance that would amend our zoning ordinance, that would allow you to put these in designated areas. They're the future, they're coming, it's just like a telephone pole transformer and that phone box on the corner of a fire hydrant. They're a utility and it's how we place them within a planned community.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to that effect, please?
Some move.
Mr. Flannery?
Second.
Mr. McCoy? Any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize the construction of a new parking machine. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Consider action to authorize the construction of a new parking machine. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Calderelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?[1441.88]
Do, Joe, could you explain the reasoning for this copying machine?
The copying machine in the Borough Office is approximately seven years old. It breaks down repeatedly. The current maintenance contract for that machine has expired and was not renewed. Basically, they won't even renew it because the parts don't exist anymore, and it's finding it difficult. It was discussed in budget time last year of replacing the copy machine. It's roughly about $3,000 a year. The former machine that you bought seven years ago had an annual, a monthly lease payment in excess of $300 some dollars a month. Now, this isn't just simply the lease on a copy machine. It's roughly half. Half is the lease, which is you're buying it, and then the other half is the maintenance agreement, all material supplies.
So that, this is a lot less than we have presently?
It's actually cheaper than what you bought seven years ago.
That's my question. Okay.
And then we received two proposals for this. One proposal was from the company that you currently have, and then this proposal through Toshiba is the same company that did the machine at the library, the Chamber of Commerce, and I believe the school district. So they have a business relationship within the town.
Any other comments?
Oh yeah, one more question on that.
Go ahead.
Did you just, their warranty, as far as their warranty?
This warranty runs the length of the lease and for 63 months.
Good. That's it. I'll write it down. Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
This is Calderelli.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes.
And again, Mr. McCoy, if I-
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Flannery?
Cog has been interested in this same area-
Regulation.
-that we've been, so I'll inform of anything that comes through there also.
Sure. Thank you. Committee reports, code enforcement committee?
The residential code and the commercial code program are ongoing, as well as the code sweeps of all four zones. They were swept for ordinance violations. Forty-two ordinance violation courtesy letters were sent out to residential properties. The code sweep program is working very well. As you can see, not as many property violations as there were once in towns. And that's all I have today.
Any comments on code enforcement? Good committee. Chief, you have anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Everybody's doing a good job.
Well, you are doing a good job.
An excellent job.
You're doing a job. Thank you. You and Assistant Chief Clark and the rest of us, thank you very much for that. Public safety.
I don't really have any official report. We're going to meet with the DA and the committee at the end of this month, and we'll have a little bit of information concerning a lot of what we had discussed.
Okay. Anybody else on their public safety?
Public Works. Thank you. Yeah, Department of Public Works have a monthly report since February 2019. You know, February, besides all the snowfall, February's sort of a slow month, so keep the guys indoors. But what we did, we have some Christmas tree recycling was completed on February 1st. Crew has been busy with winter maintenance activities on our roads and public sidewalks. Department of Public Works has been cutting off the old meter posts from commercial districts. They are about 60% complete. Crew built some additional traffic horses. Now, we have a supply of 32 traffic horses or barricades, whatever you want to call them. Streetscape project, crew is refurbishing parking meters for the public lots and also painting the back of signs that will be hung in downtown. And as far as equipments, equipment maintenance, our red F-550 dump truck, the 4x4 repair transmission cable and brakes were replaced. The snowplow lift cylinder was also repaired. The F-350 stake bed truck was inspected. Bucket truck, boom, electrical repairs were completed. As far as the F-650 five-ton dump is out right now for brake repairs. Did that come in yet?
No.
Okay. Sign maintenance is still ongoing. We always replace missing signs, repairing damaged locations. Residents out there see any signs or maybe a bolt fell off and they turn it upside down or whatever, call the Borough, call Joe, we'll send the guys out. Ongoing maintenance has been dedicated to filling potholes when we can and repairs the potholes in multiple alleys. And as always, foreman responded, marked and reported all multiple PA1 call requests. And that's all I have for this month, Mr. President.
Any other comments on public works? Thank you, Mr. Cafarelli.
Thank you.
Parks and Recreation?
My committee is-
Before you start, you said a prayer for your father-in-law at the beginning of the meeting, and we're offering prayers with you and your families.
Thank you. My committee is set to meet on Friday. Unfortunately, with my family situation and my daughter's grandfather, my father, father-in-law, being so, it looks like we're going to have to reschedule. We'll meet, and we're going to discuss the plans in regards to the future part. And I apologize if I came off crass or, and that's unlike me, but I work very hard to, and everybody on this council, I think, would attest to the fact that if I never, if I would have given up on obtaining any sort of land, we would not have that park. And I felt so passionately about it. That was one of the reasons I ran again, and it's something that's really near and dear to my heart because I grew up in that neighborhood I bought my home in, and I had a place to play. Those children have nowhere to go, so I'm fighting for them. So I am passionate about it because it means a lot to me. I'm raising a young daughter in this town, and it means a lot to her and all her friends to have somewhere to go, so I'm never going to give up on the kids. No matter if the public wants to give up on us as elected officials. And just note the fact, just so you know, I can't take my daughter, my eight-year-old daughter, to the grocery store with me because I have numerous times been accosted. And I am protecting the citizens by not speaking, and I just want everyone to know that. Can you take your child to the grocery store? Because I can't. So just think about that. I'm the third generation of my family to sit in this seat, not in this seat, to serve in public office, and I'm proud of that fact. But never once was my father worried about taking us anywhere or doing anything with us when he sat for 25 years as councilman. My daughter doesn't deserve that. I've been accosted at the ATM. Anybody that goes to the police station, ask them. I got accosted last night verbally when I went to go get pizza after a CCD meeting for my kid. It's not fair, and I'm mad.
I'd like to comment to-
Mr. McCoy?
Mrs. Miller's comments. You know, councilmen get paid $88 a month, doesn't even pay for cell phones, and I get many calls on my cellphone that my number was given out, and it shouldn't have been because I have a home phone number. But for $88 a month, people this town should be proud of every councilman that serves this community because they're never going to get rich doing this job. So they must love it, and they loved our people. So that's what I wanted to say. So she should not be accosted or any other councilman once they leave this building. We have telephones. You have a complaint, call us. We listen. Thank you.
Mr. President? It's wonderful to see everybody coming here when something bad happens. Before it was everybody when we had all the roads paved and did not raise taxes for 14 years, and we have the new streetscape program. We didn't have a full house of residents thanking us and congratulating us on our success. They only want to come here when they want to be great us.
You want this job for 88 bucks a month? I'm not running next time.
We are here to serve everybody. We are here to protect our employees, especially our police department. We have no animosity against our police department. None. We love this police department. We will work out there. We do everything we possibly can for the police department. We give them what they need to serve and protect everybody in this community. The same with the fire department. The same with the public works department. We have a lot of respect for everybody, all of our employees, because they go out there and they work hard, and they deserve the respect that they get. And as far as this litigation and everything else, it's out of our hands. We have no jurisdiction over any of it. We cannot discuss any of it by law, and it's not our law. If you don't like the laws that we have to govern by, then go see the legislators. They're the ones who dictate the laws, not us. We can't speak because we could get in trouble. There's a lot of things that I like to say, believe me, a lot of things. But we can't. And it's frustrating on our part because you think we're not doing a job or we're protecting somebody. Believe me, that's the furthest from the truth. Never in this council, as long as I'm on this board, and I think I could speak for everybody here because they could hear me and they could respond, if not, we protect nobody who breaks the law. We protect nobody that has assaulted anybody or harassed anybody. Nobody. You can't, we can't, sorry, but I can't go into details with that. I'd love to tell you about that. I would love to discuss that with you, but we can't, and I hope you respect that.
When the investigation's over.
That's correct, sir. When the investigation is over, I'll be more than happy to discuss anything with you then. But please have a respect for the fact that we can't say anything. We said enough in the beginning with the letter from our solicitor. We responded to some allegations. Hopefully, that would solve some of these problems, but apparently didn't satisfy or didn't sit well with people because they didn't hear what they wanted to hear. And unfortunately, that's regrettable. So thank you. Anybody else? Under Parks and Recreation? Engineer?
Thank you. My first item is your Ambridge Park System Improvement. That project's, it's all completed. The live striping up at the parking lot, the crosswalk, and headed park needs to be done redone in the spring. It will recheck on grassy areas around the playground installation to make sure that they're taken with the grass and untouched. My next item is your Merchant Street resurfacing. Just to refresh your memory, after the streetscape project is finished up, Borough will come in and resurface Merchant Street from 4 to 8, that includes a couple of the municipal lots. I finished preparing the plans. The specs are almost done. I will have, I'll have something to your Borough Manager here probably next week. Plans to bid the project probably early next month with the goal of having it started as soon as the streetscape project wraps up at the end of June. And Mr. Cowherd expressed some concern about the contractor dragging out the project. I told him I can set the contract time to run for only 45 days to make sure that they know they've got a clock running. Joe doesn't want to see this dragging out to the end of summer into the fall, so make sure we get that thing all done by the end of August, hopefully. My next item is your pollution reduction plan for your storm sewer system. Again, just a refresher, the pollution reduction plan was to keep sediment pollution out of French Pond Creek over the north end of town, and one of the methods of doing that was to install filter bags in your inlets. And Mr. Cowherd has let me know that he was going to be purchasing about a dozen inlet filter bags. I provided him with a map of the area. He should install them, gave some data sheets, talked to Public Works about maintenance, what they would have to do where that's concerned. My next item was a Palachad subdivision. This was a simple subdivision plan along North Walnut Street. I reviewed it, provided comments to the Borough Planning Commission, also received and reviewed the County Planning Commission comments, and that should be going to the Planning Commission. I wouldn't say it was the 21st, Joe?
Yes.
Good question. And my last item, which if you're trying to follow my reports, it's not on there. Mr. Cowherd also asked me to prepare a summary, project summary, and a cost estimate for resurfacing municipal parking lots along Melrose at Sixth and behind Dollar General, I believe it was, along with adding some lighting to them similar to what we're doing with the Merchant Streetscape project, and that is for submitted to CDBG program to hopefully obtain some CDBG funding to get a couple more-
That would be great because we'll make an argument.
I know we submitted previously, Joe, didn't we? And I guess it was turned down.
Yeah, they turned it down because the money went to the streetscape project, but it's been three years, so I think it's favorable that we should-
That hurts to try again.
Yeah. Get it through your head.
And that's all I have for you this one.
The, I don't know if anybody noticed, but the lights are on on one side of the street now.
Oh, everything.
I hope everybody likes that because that's what's going to be on the other side of the street come the end of summer, so it'll be really a major, major improvement to the downtown district. Anybody have any questions on the engineer's report? Do I have a motion to re, to approve all official reports?
Soon move.
Mr. McCoy, second by Mr. Flannery. Any question on any of the reports? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cafarelli?
Yes.
This is Calderelli.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McCollage?
Yes. Any unfinished basis?
Do we have a call?
A call? You mean the, for the, the plan to unify?
Yeah. Chili, call.
Yeah, the chili, call. We got it, all right.
Mayor, can you say something? Yeah, I'd like to let people know that I spoke with council to try to reinstate the patrol that they've been having from the Housing Authority up to the Crescent Village and Conwy Village, and also the housing on First Street and on 21st Street, 20th Street. I think it has to be reinstated because I'm afraid of that spring is coming and then we got summer. And with the police, and my bases on, we have a majority of only three officers on duty. And with the help from the police chief, he may-
Mr. Mayor, please. That's contractual issue that wasn't-
Okay, but, no, wait.
We can't discuss that.
But council has thought about it, you know what I mean? So-
Yeah, we're talking about it.
We're talking about, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
We're talking about it, you know what I mean? Council was, you wasn't there when you were talking.